Is six thirty one, so we're gonna get this party started, even though I know a few members are still coming in. So I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. And if you all would care to, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. If you just mute, I will, you can recite on mute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so we'll move on to public comments and there has been no submission for public comment tonight. So we're gonna keep moving beyond that and go right to the consent agenda. So Amy, do you have a motion for us?
I do. I move to approve the consent agenda of December eighteenth, two thousand twenty four.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Alright, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Robin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Amy Vessels? Are you frozen, Amy?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. Yep, got you. Hi, John. Sorry, I missed you earlier. How vote? How do you vote?
Yes.
And Shondor?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright guys, moving on to the next item here, school committee chairperson update. I snuck this into my update. I'm wondering if there would be any objection to flip flopping the January meetings, thereby making the budget workshop the virtual meeting and the other meeting in person. Yeah, so can I get a thumbs up if you guys are good with that? Is that okay, John?
Remind us of the dates. I'm trying to pull it.
Yeah, absolutely. So the the budget workshop is scheduled. Oh, boy. Can I? Kirk, is it the twenty second for the budget workshop?
Fifteenth, but no reason.
Fifteenth and twenty ninth then?
Correct, fifteenth and twenty ninth.
So right now, the budget workshop, which is a little bit of a slog for everybody, and there's a lot of like document access, things of of that sort. So we thought it might be a better use of our brain power to make that the virtual meeting and then have us be in person on the twenty ninth. And then just kind of resume as it's already scheduled. So we would have back to back in person meetings. So everybody cool with that?
So you're not actually changing the date of the budget workshop. You're just changing the budget workshop to a virtual meeting and changing the meeting on the twenty ninth to an in person meeting.
You got it.
Okay.
Alright, great. Alright, so be it. So Alita, if you don't mind making that change, if possible, I know that's a pain in the neck for you, but thank you for switching that. Alright guys, so moving on now to our student representative report, and we do have Ryan Nitro here to share with us his update.
Hello, thank you. So just the winter sports are kind of getting a start. So boys and girls basketball started and as well as hockey the other night. Both basketball teams won, hockey tied. After school today, some of the class officers, we started working on the yearbook. We took pictures for the yearbook photos and then we're kind of starting to get the yearbook club in this folder, starting to get pictures of each class as a whole ready for the yearbook. Our youth advisory council is meeting tomorrow during long block. I know Superintendent Downing is on that. And then we will, we just finished our middle school visits, a cup, so like a group of kids, I think it was fifteen or so, broke up into a couple of different rooms. I was in the extracurricular room, so I talked a little bit about class president and then also this. And so that was, that was really cool experience. Kids, kids seemed a little interested, but a little shy, a little shy at first. And then we go in spirit week right now, it's until break. And Ava and I both applied for one director positions at the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives. She did director of communications and I applied for director of resources. And then our winter performing arts and in different bands have all been performing these past few weeks. So we got any questions?
That's fantastic. Thanks, Ryan. I see Amy as a question.
Yep.
When will you guys find out? Like, when is the election for the director?
Um, so they review our applications. The application deadline was Sunday, the twenty second. And I think he was gonna, one of the people we talked to at the initial meeting, who Ava and I were kind of close with and runs it, he said they're gonna look at it through January. So we'll keep you, keep you guys updated.
Okay, and is Ava at the wrestling match tonight?
I'm assuming so. I think so, yeah.
Wrestling match going on, so go in the show.
Yep.
That's fantastic. Thanks, Ryan. Any other questions from the committee?
Hello, I'm sorry.
Wow, hi, Mr. Melbourne. Alright, so Ryan, I did want to tell you this. I know that you are a busy guy and you might not want to stick around and maybe you just want to watch on YouTube. There is a pretty important topic later on that's very student of probably high interest to students, and it is the update on the math and science curriculum and how the school is kind of altering course there a little bit. So if that's something that you want to stick around for, it's like just a couple of bullets down, and you have every right to participate in that conversation if you do stick around. If not, if you just want to watch it on YouTube or catch it on tape later, it might be something that you could talk about in your next report.
I got nowhere to be. I'll, I'll stick around until then.
Okay, great. Fantastic. I know that that's uh, an interest for you, right? So, good. Alright guys, so we're gonna keep going here with the superintendent's report. We're gonna head over to announcements. I'll turn it over to Kirk.
Madam Chair, thanks for the recognition. Before I get into my announcements that are in my report, I want to bring to the community's attention, to our committee's attention. Today, we delved into the world of our digital release of the report cards. It's my understanding that there may be a technical issue regarding Power School and we are, have notified them to that technical issue. We're preparing a message out to the community in case people are seeing anything, having any difficulties in receiving their report cards. So more information to come, but I just wanted to brief the committee on that as this is a live in action moment that's happening right here during the school committee meeting. So we will be on that and get a communication to our families to let them know that we've reached out to our vendor regarding the complication. But moving on to the written report in front of you. As you mentioned in your report, Madam Chair, we will be having the budget workshop on January fifteenth for our new committee members to manage expectations and bringing forward that first run of the budget. It really is a workshop. We're bringing all the things forward to you that we wish to have in here in the school system. And so it's, it's really heavy to the expense side in terms of that first budget workshop. So I don't want anyone to be alarmed or shocked by what will look like high assessment numbers and high budget increases because we will not receive all the information on the revenue side and some of our other cost drivers until later in January, possibly early February. It's really mid February, we, we begin to tune in solidly to what, what the actual forecast for our towns will look like, which is prior to our joint finance committee meetings and prior to the hearing. So just wanted to head everybody up to that moment in time as we prepare for another budget season. The second piece is, we had the great fortune at Florence Sawyer School to host Senator Robin Kennedy. She was scheduled to join us last spring and a conflict arose which afforded us to her visit this fall. We had a chance to tour several classrooms, both in the Sawyer's wing and the Emerson wing of the campus. And we had an opportunity to really have some good face time with Senator Kennedy and discuss a little bit of some of the financial structures that can be limiting for us in our budget construction. And, and she has pledged her engagement with us as a member as of the Education Committee for the state. And we look forward to more work with her. She was very excited to see the civics work we're doing, so we've invited her back to Florence Sawyer School for the Race to the Presidency Annual Unit. And hopefully she'll be able to join us for the student debates. And the last announcement I have for you this evening is the high school graduation competency determination. As you know, with the passage of ballot question two in November, MCAS is no longer a competency determination requirement by the state of Massachusetts to receive your high school diploma. As a result, it falls back to local school, school districts in determining their competency determinations. We have a policy for graduation requirements for our students that is our locally defined competency determination. We are getting live information from DESI on guidance on how to handle competency determinations. There was a webinar with DESI this afternoon at three o'clock, which we're not ready to brief the committee on as we digest the impact of that information that we've learned. But I have put two documents into the meeting materials tonight. One is Policy IKF for our graduation requirements, along with the FAQ memo that we got from Acting Commissioner of Education. I'm making a request to Ms. Vessels if we can review these at the Policy Subcommittee meeting to look to Policy IKF, to look for any language adjustments. And I should have more information by the time the next time policy meets to bring to this group as we just want to ensure that that is defined here in Nishoba and clear to our residents and our students. But to be clear, right now, MCAS is not a requirement for any of our students in currently in the school system. And so as they're proceeding along, they're taking their courses and meeting their graduation requirements, we'll be confident that our local competency determination requirements will be met in time for graduation this year. And so I'll end there with announcements because we'll start with strategic work and Miss Friend will introduce that strategic work, but any questions on any of the announcements provided this evening?
Amy, you're cool with the addition to your next agenda? Thank you.
I know I've been keeping Ms. Vessels busy lately with some policy emails and guidance, so I look forward to our next meeting.
Alright, I'm not seeing any questions on those matters, so it looks like we can move to the update on the math and science curriculum.
That's great. And so I tucked a presentation into the superintendent's report tonight, but I want to introduce Assistant Superintendent Friend who brought a team of fabulous educators here tonight for you all to learn from. Take it away, Assistant Superintendent.
A team of two, an awesome duo. So with that, I would like to thank the committee for approval of our FY twenty five High Quality Instructional Materials, Professional Development and Purchase Opportunity Grant, which you will hear a little bit more about from Curriculum Director Candace McBridey. And we're excited to have received that grant because it's going to help support our movement with material adoption at the middle school. But without further ado, I would like to introduce Candace McBridey, who is our Curriculum Director for Math and Science, and Nate Melbourne, who is our Department Head for Mathematics at our high school. And Ms. McBridey and Mr. Melbourne are going to provide an overview and an update of our curriculum review process for math and science respectively. Ms. McBridey is going to begin with an update of Phase Two of Science at the high school level, nine through twelve, and she's going to give a little bit of an update about what's happening with Open SIEAD six through eight. And then together, they've been working very closely, Ms. McBridey and Mr. Melbourne, on our six through twelve review for mathematics. So I am deeply grateful for the partnership that they have engendered with one another and the collaboration and the guidance and the alignment as we work to really strengthen the learning experience for our students and support our teachers with what they need. K to twelve and specifically six through twelve. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McBridey, who's going to start us off. And I think Ms. Masterson is going to show the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Friend, and thank you, Alita, for leading the presentation for us. I'll just wait till it's up. I am happy to be here tonight with Nate Melbourne, the district's math department head at the high school, to report out on the curriculum review status in the areas of math and science in grades six through twelve. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge both Nate and Linda Peer, the science department head, for their collaboration, enthusiasm, and knowledge sharing throughout these reviews. It's been instrumental to our progress. Next slide, please. So for this presentation, we will update the committee on the status of the nine through twelve review and six through twelve math review as outlined on that slide. Next slide, please. So I wanted to take a moment to just remind the committee of Nishoba's curriculum review process and that this process consists of five phases. For this school year, nine through twelve math is in Phase One, which is the analysis phase of our current practices. Six through eight math will be in Phases One and Two this year with the end goal of investigating and purchasing new high quality instructional materials. Nine through twelve science is building off the work from last year and is now in Phase Two refining their curriculum. More details will be shared for each of these domains in the slides to come. However, I did also want to mention that six through eight science is still in Phase Three as we are carrying out the implementation of Open SIEAD. This, last year, they implemented two units. This year, four units, and next year will be full implementation of all six units. And that work is going really well. Next slide, please. Our curriculum work aligns with the district's strategic plan under Strategic Objective Two, as well as our development of Portrait of a Nishoba Graduate and our vision and values. Ultimately, we do this work to ensure the best possible education for our students. Next slide. So now I will talk about nine through twelve science. And as you recall, nine through twelve science completed Phase One of Curriculum Review last year, taking a close analysis of our current practices. Tonight, I want to provide you with an update on the work that has been done to date and also what will continue to unfold. The focus of Phase Two work has been broken down into three priorities, that being curriculum, course sequencing and offerings, and professional learning for teachers. The first focus encompasses the department's work to carry out the vision for science instruction. Part of that work is a revision of the curriculum in biology, chemistry, and physics to include all three dimensions of the next generation science standards. Those dimensions being disciplinary core ideas, cross cutting concepts, and science and engineering practices. These three dimensions are the foundation of the NGSS and are also the foundation of innovation in STEM industries. In a three, in, yeah, in a three dimensional learning approach, students are given the opportunity to think like scientists and engineers to strengthen their critical thinking skills, integrate skills into content, tie content directly to the real world, which then empowers our students to be lifelong learners and responsible global citizens. This approach is in alignment with the vision that the department has for science education. In addition to that work with the NGSS standards into the curriculum, Linda Peer has been working collaboratively with teaching and learning on alignment in science education six through twelve. Some of the main components of the Open SIEAD curriculum, including anchoring phenomena, inquiry based learning, and student discourse, will extend six through twelve. The next focus is on course sequencing and offering. Through last year's thought exchange, it was suggested that there needs to be more clarity regarding the course offerings and differences between science courses. This was also addressed in the Equity Report and analyzing barriers that exist to advanced coursework. This will be explored during this phase of curriculum review and recommendations given. And the third focus will be on professional learning for our teachers. Science teachers attended the BER two thousand twenty four conference just last week on next generation science standards, powerful strategies and resources for teaching science. The feedback from the department was very positive and teachers left with many resources to help revise current curriculum. The learning that occurred there will resume and be used during the early release professional development to adapt at least one unit in biology, chemistry, and physics. That is our work for the year, and our next immediate steps are to ensure we have skill progressions in our courses and explore the course sequencing and offerings as they pertain to electives and barriers. Next slide. And so we'll transition to math now and the steps that have been completed at this time and what our next steps are. As scheduled in the district's review cycle documents, six through twelve math has entered Phase One and has been analyzing our current practices. The six through eight math curriculum council is working through Phases One and Two, and nine through twelve is working through Phase One this year and will enter Phase Two next year. As was the case with our other curriculum reviews, Nishoba has partnered with DESI's HQIM Implementation Network, and this has created a partnership with other districts and strengthened collaboration. This support has also been important as the council moves through the process. The curriculum council has worked hard to write a vision for middle school mathematics that builds off of the K through five vision. They also completed a data review to analyze if current practices are meeting our vision. Equitable practices are in place and that the curricular materials are working for all students. It was determined that there is a need for new core curricular materials, and thus we have moved into Phase Two. As Assistant Superintendent Friend mentioned earlier tonight, Nishoba has secured the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five High Quality Instructional Materials, Professional Development and Purchase Opportunity for STEM. And this grant acceptance allows for an offset of the cost of curricular materials, but also provides professional learning from T N T P to assist with Phase Two and also the implementation of new HQIM. Next slide, please. As was the case with K through five literacy, we are only moving forward with curricular options that meet or exceed the expectations for ed reports and curate in the areas of standard alignment. The district is currently reviewing three programs, and these programs are illustrative math, Carnegie Learning, and Amplify Desmos. These three curriculum materials are not only highly rated, but also extend up through the high school. Vertical alignment and sequencing has one, has been one of the drivers of the process, and I'm thankful that Mr. Melbourne has been part of this process. Our next steps include engaging feedback from our community. Our math instructional coaches will be completing a unit study in each of those programs, and we will conduct field testing. We'll be looking to make a decision in March and we'll keep the committee updated throughout the process within the superintendent's reports. Our teachers are excited about this work and are looking forward to engaging in the field tests and determining the best option for curricular materials for our students. And so now I'll turn it over to Mr. Melbourne to talk about nine through twelve math.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. McBridey, for your introduction. We can go to the next slide, please. So as mentioned, I'm Nate Melbourne, the math department head at the high school, and I'm very thankful for having been a part of the six through eight process so far. And I'm also thankful for the opportunity to share this evening on the nine through twelve process. At the high school level, we're in the beginning phases of curriculum review process. The process has multiple phases, including prerequisites, equitable access to advanced level courses, placement decisions, curriculum choice, and instructional strategies. To begin, we have engaged in a review of the findings we have so far, including the Equity Audit and MCAS and course enrollment data and the findings of the K through eight review. That review has led us to the beginnings of deep analysis. We are recognizing the need to review current course sequence, current course prerequisites, and available placement options from six through twelve. As we are engaging in this review, we are also working with the math department to build a nine through twelve math instruction vision at the high school, just as was the case for a K through eight. Our next steps will include surveying our community, and then following this, we'll use the information to make our recommendations around courses and programming. That is the high school. Go next slide and pass it back to Ms. McBridey.
The work with the curriculum review is multifaceted, and we are grateful for our teachers and our leaders who continue to lean in to these reviews on behalf of our students as we continue to work to improve and excel in our practice. We thank you for your support and your time tonight, and we're now wondering if there are any questions.
That was great. Thanks so much, guys. Let's see if we have any questions in the room or comments. Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, thank you so much for such a professional and succinct presentation. I wanted to just ask some follow up questions about the stakeholder input that you used to come up with some of the recommendations and and how the data that you reviewed, I think, is part of seeking the stakeholder input framed, like from Phase One, framed your work for Phase Two.
Are you referring to?
Go ahead, sorry.
Are you referring to nine through twelve science or what part of the review?
Well, this, the same, I saw that. The same, I saw that mentioned in the six through eight math, but also in the nine through 12 science and math. I think it was mentioned in each, in each part of the work that's, that you presented out on just referred to a little bit differently. And it sounds like you collected data that informed the work that you plan to do, but I was wondering if you could explain a little bit more about some of the conclusions from the data more specifically.
Sure. Um, so for nine through 12 science, we had done last year a survey of our students and a thought exchange with our families. And from that data, there was, um, the identification of like the three high priorities of more hands on materials, real world, um, exposure to science and knowing why they're doing what they're doing. And so as we worked through kind of those as well as, um, just a need for more, I think, training around NGSS. We are using what we're learning through, um, like that professional development in order to put more of those real world, um, experiences and really those critical thinking skills that, um, our families were asking for. And then students were really, uh, wanting, what, what came out a lot in the survey was around the why and wanting to know like what they're learning. How does that apply to their life now and how does that work in the future? And so that is also part of, you know, the cross cutting concepts. And so really trying to like review our curriculum in that light. So that is for nine through 12 science. And then for six through eight math, the data we've analyzed so far is the M C A S data over the years and the STAR data that we have, both growth and proficiency. And so from that and then from, you know, what teachers are seeing in the classroom, we are seeing that the current materials we are using are not, um, you know, having the results that we would like for all students. And so that's where the, the thought to go on to phase two had come from. And our next steps are to survey our families and our, um, students regarding math six through eight as well. And then that's similar for nine through 12, kind of the.
I feel like I asked a very, very broad question. You did a really great job of answering it. Um, and I kind of put you on the spot. So thank you so much.
Was that it, Amy, or did you have something else?
I, I do have another question, but I don't want to, I, I see other hands up. Why don't you go to them first and then we can come.
All right. Okay, good. Um, so over to Amy Vessels.
Uh, yes, my question, um, I know that we've talked a lot about with the equity, equity report. Um, you know, making sure kids can move between an accelerated class to a, to a honors class, to an AP class. So there's, it's, you know, they don't get tracked into one. So that there's more, um, ability for kids to, to move into those higher classes or whatever. So I guess what I'm wondering is, are you looking at that with the curriculum review in terms of looking at, is there a big gap, you know, is there a big gap between like what they're doing in honors versus what they're doing AP versus what they're doing in, um, you know, like the other levels? So that kids, you know, I'm trying to say so that it's not, it doesn't, if a kid moves from one track to the next, it doesn't feel like a huge gap. So that if they want to move up into that higher track, it feels, I guess, more doable. Is that something that you're looking at in your curriculum review?
I would suggest perhaps Mr. Melbourne take that one on and, um, the, the short answer would be yes, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Melbourne.
Yes, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt there. Um, yes, absolutely. So I would say that is the primary focus of where we're at right now. We, our, our big quote from, uh, Mrs. Friend earlier was that our goal is to increase the ceiling of each and every student by eliminating barriers. And that is the most true thing. Um, and that is exactly where the math department is looking. And it's kind of, as you said, it's, it's twofold. We're looking to, um, eliminate barriers that exist currently. In terms of, as you said, getting locked into a track. But then also the consistency, uh, across the curriculum horizontally and vertically, right? So we do want to make sure that, um, there's a shared experience across, you know, for instance, algebra two or geometry, regardless of, of what the level is. And then that there's consistency from six all the way through 12 in terms of, um, the content.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, Ryan has a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to like assert to you guys that kind of the, the real world implications and like the science, for example, uh, that it does really do make a difference because, um, I think with like some of the AP classes, when you have like specifically, um, outlined curriculum, it can be tough. But like, uh, my chemistry teacher, we were like doing this whole lesson on molecular bonds. And then he ended up showing us how, um, in modern day, there's like artificial gecko skin that kind of uses that same idea and just like showed you like, kind of why it's important, like all the things that it can do. So I think that is one thing that is very important. And then also in the past with different levels, when they talked about different levels, I think, um, what has been really helpful for me in choosing what classes to take is the, the teachers who kind of took the time and set aside, um, a class period to really explain the differences of each course and kind of your path in the rest of high school. Like if you take this class, then the next year after that, this is kind of what you'll have available to you. So I think like having, um, kind of like a uniform explanation of the available courses would be, is like really helpful.
That's great. Thanks, Ryan. Your perspective is so useful. I'm so glad you're here. Thanks. Uh, let's go over to John.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for the presentation there. A quick question, the, the math websites, you guys have the illustrative math and Carnegie Learning. Is that, I assume kids don't have laptops in class. This is more like they're assigning homework through these websites. Is that, or is that extra learning or what is that?
Um, we are a one to one, um, district. So each kid will have their, uh, Chromebook, their Google Chromebook. And so each one of the options is a blended curriculum where there are digital, um, components, some heavier than others, but then also the physical, like consumable copies where students will have a workbook that they will, um, be able to complete. So that's in all three.
All right, Lesby. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Back over to Amy.
Yeah, thank you. So my question has now has to do with prerequisites and sequencing. I saw that come up on a few different slides and, um, so I'm wondering where you are in that process and if, um, it's kind of hard for me to understand whether you've already come to some conclusions about whether you're going to be moving around the order of science classes in the high school. In particular, I'm thinking about physics being a ninth grade course and how, because it's a ninth grade course, it affects AP choices that are available to kids now because it's listed as a prerequisite for higher level classes. So is that some of the work that's being done now or if you could talk more about that, that'd be great.
Sure. Uh, yes. So that is the conversation and the work now is trying to, one, be able to clarify the difference between physical science and the physics with engineering class. Cause that seemed, um, it, like it needed some more clarification. And then discussing, um, like the level options as well as the sequence. And I know that Dr. Boynton and, um, Mrs. Pierre have been already like talking about that and working on next steps, but decisions have not been made yet.
So is, is, will those decisions be made in this phase so that they would be? And if so, when would, when any changes be implemented?
I can answer that, Ms. McBrady. So Dr. Boynton will present the program of studies for the committee's review. Uh, I believe it's in January. Um, and so any substantive changes would be communicated at that time. At this juncture, we are not looking at any significant major changers, changes to prerequisites. That's going to involve more discourse, conversation and community input. But we will certainly keep the committee updated as we move forward.
Will the community input, input be a part, will be, will that factor into the program of, like, will that happen before the program of studies is put out in January?
So I would defer to Dr. Boynton, but I, I would anticipate that we're, we will not be seeing any significant changes for, uh, next fall. Um, those decisions, um, would have an impact and we would want to make sure that we are moving forward very thoughtfully and carefully. Um, and that we're computing, you know, communicating the bigger picture as it relates to any changes. So those significant changes are not imminent, um, with fall of 2025, but we will certainly keep the community, the, uh, committee updated. Uh, before I go over to Jackie, just a quick, um, I just wanted to insert a quick comment about the physical science versus physics as a ninth grade course. So, um, Candace, you said that there needs to be more clarity in helping people understand what the courses are. My understanding, after watching two of my kids take that ninth grade class, is that it really is a physics class. It's not a physical science class. So, um, explaining to people what the courses are is one thing, but are you talking about like having the teachers shift a little bit so that the course is more like a physical science class as opposed to, um, what is ultimately a physics class in practice right now?
I think like that is the conversation of, um, you know, it was intended to be more of a physical science class with the engineering in it. And so I think looking at how the, uh, class is described and the, the content that is covered within it is all up for conversation right now and what Mrs. Pierre has been talking with the department about.
Got it. And then I guess my, my follow up question to that would be because math is so intrinsic to those engineering concepts. My concern is that by teaching engineering at the freshman level, so many kids haven't had any algebra yet. And so it almost makes it impossible for them to take the engineering piece because they're just not developmentally ready for that because of their math. Because they were, they weren't mature enough maybe to take the algebra in eighth grade. And so that's my concern is that by, by keeping that physics and engineering component in the ninth grade, that it's actually disrupting a more natural progression of learning for kids. And whereas you could keep physics at the 11th grade level and many more kids will have had the math they need to do well in that engineering course. And so is, is that all, that's like all part of the conversation you guys are having?
It is. And like, um, Assistant Superintendent Friend said, I don't know that it, you know, that there would be a change for the upcoming year, but that is the conversation of where, where that course belongs. And what's best for the kids.
Got it. That's great. Um, I see Jackie's next. Go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you. Um, I am just curious, as part of the curriculum review, are you looking at student data around what courses, what course placement is recommended at the middle school level overrides and how successful or unsuccessful students are based on those recommendations? You know, I do think that would have some helpful information in terms of like how, how we're assessing kids and making determinations about placement.
Yes. So I know that, oh, sorry, Mrs. French, are you going to speak?
I was just going to say, I think it speaks to the, uh, a larger need of reviewing, um, our course placement recommendation process in all content areas. It's highlighted here, um, to, um, Madam Chair's point around the implications with a math recommendation being tied with, with physics. And it, and it's all interrelated, but it does speak to an identified need to review all of, all of our placement process as students enter into ninth grade. And I know that Dr. Boynton and I have spoken about it and I know that she has spoken about it with the department head. So I looked to Mr. Melbourne to see if you have anything there to add because I know you've been deeply engaged in looking at the data access and enrollment to advanced level courses, the implications of the decisions that are made in seventh and eighth grade and how they have a future impact on access to advanced level courses at the high school. We're aware of all of this and all of this is part of what we're engaging in and looking at and reviewing. So Mr. Melbourne, anything to add there?
Yeah, that was perfect, Ms. Friend. I would just add also that Ms. McBrady and I have specifically with regard to the math placement process talked, I wouldn't say ad nauseam, because I don't think she's sick of me just yet, but we've talked a great deal. And also, um, you know, we've sought out, um, the different placement processes in neighboring districts and looked to quite a bit of research, actually. But yes, the specific data itself is going to be our very next kind of step in the math department as part of our phase one to look into, um, exactly as you described, the placements process and the success level and, um, everything else. Just to make sure, um, that we are, again, not creating a process that is prohibitive of student success.
I just want to say how excited I am. I know that this isn't like exciting for certain people. But like curriculum is kind of a lot, uh, to unpack and to learn, but it, it's a, for anyone that's watching in the community, like I have to just drive home how important and wonderful it is that our district is willing to go through this process and how there's a real amazing opportunity, I think, to meet the needs of all of our students. So thank you.
Agreed. Let's go over to Amy Cohen one more time.
Thank you, I, for acknowledging me one last time. I just want to use this opportunity to, um, urge the committee that's doing this work to consider, um, seeking some more feedback from, um, families on the sequencing and, um, prerequisite decision making that will be happening. Because, um, you know, I can echo what Leah's experience with, um, my children in those classes has been, and I can tell you that, um, it seems as if physics first might be one of those, um, blockades or hurdles that's keeping kids from accessing other higher level science classes at the high school because it's prerequisite for AP biology as, as the handbook is written now. And so, um, that's my plug. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Any other questions, guys? I think I just have one more question and this might be best for Kirk or for Laura. Uh, I know that a lot has gone into developing a vision for math learning and visions for perhaps all of the disciplines. Are you guys also, I'm sure you are, but, um, I just wanted to ask it out loud. How is this fitting into or getting couched into the Portrait of a Graduate?
I, I think Assistant Superintendent would be fabulous at talking to this, but I know our educators can do it too because it's being embedded. So who wants to take it?
Yeah, we're not going to let you answer that question, Superintendent Tony. I mean, I, I mean, I think I would, it is, you know, we hope that it's infused in, in all that we do. But I, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Melbourne, I think, who, you know, who was, was closely engaged with students. Ms. McBrady, I see you in classrooms all of the time. But Mr. Melbourne, you have kiddos right in front of you every single day. Can you talk to, um, this question about how we're working to bring this to life in our curriculum documents, in the classroom with pedagogy? Um, we're not there yet, but we're certainly in process, if you would, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah. And, um, and I would echo, and if reading through, you know, our math instructional visions from K through eight as they exist now, um, and as we're developing the nine through 12, that is really our primary focus, right? So a focus of creating students who are globally competent citizens, right? We are focusing on communication and empathy that, um, everything we do, it's more than just math. So you'll see a lot of discussion in there about, um, the thinking process and the, the collaborative process that is math. And, um, I, you know, it's a huge testament to how, well, kind of all the teachers have shared, you know, the responsibility of creating, um, a true Nishoba graduate that meets all these competencies, right? Where it's not just that we're teaching, you know, solving quadratics. We're focused on the process of learning itself within math. So, um, yeah, I think it's, it is definitely, uh, and you can, you can see it in all of the existing, um, documents.
Right. Um, so you were saying, I think, that each one of the disciplines, may, maybe it was just science, that we're looking to see one unit developed this year and implemented next year? Or is that happening in science or math?
That is happening in science. There's a goal for at least one. Um, we're hoping for more, but, um, it's, it's, we want the process to really, we don't want them to rush it. We want to make sure, um, it's very thoughtful. And so. And so the work that's been happening so far will be implemented next year. But I don't know, in the, in the early release times, there's a possibility that they'll be working on a unit that comes up later in the year. The one they started with right now in biology was for like their unit one, and so that would carry out next year.
All right. So Ryan, you heard it here first and you can kind of spread the word that your math and science educators are doing this work and that we should be seeing an evolution, uh, slowly but surely. So.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Um, all right. So Kirk, I think that that might, uh, wrap up that portion of the superintendent's report.
That's great. Thank you. I kind of snuck that presentation into the report if you noticed there.
Yeah, that's fine. And it was a good one. So we want to thank Candace and Nate, uh, and of course Laura for all their hard work. Thank you guys for being here and for giving us that great presentation. Good luck with your work.
Great job, guys. Great job, team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Simon.
Um, all right. So everybody, we're going to move, uh, from the superintendent's report and we're going to head over to, uh, new business, which there's a few things here. Um, outdoor classroom approval is going to be the first item here. We heard about this last meeting. So Amy, would you mind, um, starting us off with a motion here?
Uh, we actually haven't heard this one, Ms. Faberito.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, um, if you wouldn't mind, may I kind of introduce what we're doing here?
I guess you should because I'm clearly mistaken. Go right ahead.
Uh, and understandably so, because we've had a few steps in, that we needed to make in getting our outdoor classroom experiences aligned. And as you recall, our principals came forward, uh, early in the school year to say that that was our goal to do that. And so they committed to the fifth grade and do have in our outdoor classroom experiences, uh, for our fifth graders. And it was at that time they said, well, we knew there'd be a lag there for the Florence Sawyer students. And so Madam Chair, you, uh, heard on the sixth and, uh, excuse me, the current fifth and sixth grade students and how that was going to adjust for the Florence Sawyer students. What you have before you tonight is now the outdoor classroom that is aligned for the three fifth grades. So we have Principal Zablak, um, we have Principal Bates, I want to make sure we got it ready, and Principal Blanchard here tonight, um, to ask your consideration. Uh, so we can, uh, begin that process for our fifth grade students, uh, Madam Chair. And at this point, I'll take it over to Mr. Bates, uh, but I think, uh, Madam Chair also, um, I had signified vote on here. We recognize that it's, it's, um, our policy to wait until the next thing. So we can, we, we don't necessarily need this vote tonight. We can put it into the consent agenda of the next meeting. I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah, I think that that would be fantastic. Um, that's a good way to do it. Thank you.
Yep. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bates.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Uh, that was a little soft, Joel, so maybe just lean in.
Yep. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Um, and good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity per, to present our new district-aligned trips to outdoor classroom. Tonight, my colleagues and I are seeking your approval to initiate the process that will allow all of our district fifth graders a rewarding, common experience. In our planning process, we've been mindful of strategic objective three, initiative five, grow a pre-kay 12 Nishoba identity. To that end, we researched the nature's classroom sites that could accommodate all of our fifth graders at the same time. We found that our options were limited to only two nature's classroom sites, uh, those in Great Barrington and Freedom, New Hampshire, both of which presented some logistical challenges. As a result, we turned to looking at sites that could accommodate all three schools within the same timeframe. Uh, fortunately, we didn't have to look much further than Oceanwood Camp in Ocean Park, Maine. This has been the site that Mary Rollinson has used for many years and the site that our fifth, sixth grade cohort will be using in the spring. So what we present to you tonight is an opportunity for all of our fifth graders to experience nature's classroom at the same location, all during the month of October, ensuring consistency across the district. Mary Rollinson has the first week, Florence Sawyer has the third week, and the center school will have the fourth week. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present this on behalf of my colleagues and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, great. Thank you, Joel. Uh, does anybody have any questions about this element?
Sorry, I do. My, uh,
Your golden hand is broken. Go right ahead, Jackie.
This is, um, I guess less of a question to our amazing principals, but more of a question and/or comment for consideration for the school committee and our, um, administration. So currently, some fundraising happens for some activities. So for example, I, I know our eighth grade students often as a class will fundraise for their big field trip to, uh, DC in the spring. And I'm just wondering, as we're kind of thinking about fundraising alignment across the district, if we do fundraising, like let's say, for example, I'm a fifth grade parent in Stowe and I want to do fundraising. It's always been that if you're doing fundraising as a class, it's shared and distributed with everyone. And so I don't think that that's necessarily anything that's happened specifically for nature's classroom in the, in the past. But I do want us to think about, and I guess at some point in the future, discuss from an e- an equity standpoint, how we would do that fundraising across the district, across three schools. So not appropriate for our conversation today, but just something that I think is important that we think about in the future.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, Dr. Reiner, I, I hear you entirely. You've given a beautiful example of why there is an element in the strategic plan around a Nishoba foundation. Because if we were able to inspire families of which the school district cannot create, just as like the school district cannot create, uh, a PTO, uh, as a 501(c)(3) organization, that's what we need. And so that type of structure would go a long way in addressing the kind of, um, ideas that you're presenting here tonight. So I recognize that's a question for another day, uh, but it's definitely something on our mind as well.
That wouldn't be prohibitive in your mind though, Jackie? Okay.
No, definitely not. Cause I know how we've always kind of operated, having a current fifth grader and, and a ninth grader. There was no fundraising efforts made at that time. Um, but it's something for us to think about because I do think as we're building a district-wide identity and shared experiences for all of our students and families, that's something that we should think about. And I'm glad that Superintendent Downing and the district is thinking about that. So thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Well, I'm, um, very grateful to all of you guys for syncing this up. It's a long time coming and I so appreciate all the effort it took to help it evolve into this. I know Joel is bearing the brunt mostly of just trying to make sure that all the, nobody loses anything in this effort. So I really appreciate that. And, uh, we look forward to taking our vote next time. So thanks.
Thank you for your time.
You guys. Yeah. Thanks, guys, for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Uh, without objection, I hope, we are going to take the Dear J, um, item off of this agenda and move it to the next agenda. It is really just, um, and it needs further discussion at the Dear J level is all. And they asked if they could just have a little bit more time to make sure that they are advising us in the most appropriate way with all the information they need. So more to come on this if that's a point.
Madam Chair, we'll move that to January 29th then?
Yeah, that's fine. Cause their, their next meeting, I think, is January 10th-ish. Jackie, um, so we're gonna, we'll meet with them then and, and hopefully come to some more clarity on that. Yeah, Scott.
I just want to clarify, the reason there's no materials in the packet for this meeting is because it's just not ready to be discussed about.
Yeah, we deter, we, it came to our attention after the agenda was posted that we weren't going to be ready to move forward on this item. So I left it on the agenda, um, because I had to. And, um, just let you guys know that we're going to move it forward. Yeah. So thanks for that. Awesome. All right, guys. The next item, uh, looks intimidating, but Amy Vessels is a master of this. So she is going to escort us through this, uh, landmine field. Um, so what Amy has here is a list of new policies that her subcommittee, not new policies, but revised policies that her subcommittee has been working on. You guys have the spreadsheet that identifies anything that is kind of substantive. It also provides you with all of the redlined versions that show you what is changing. What we like to do here procedurally is Amy is going to help us look at, or she's going to highlight the couple that really do require your attention. It's more than just changing comments and such. And then we can give her our feedback. She's going to take some notes and then she'll bring it back to her subcommittee. Um, cause there are a couple of prickly ones in here. So, um, I'm going to throw it over to Amy Vessels and then you guys can give her your feedback.
All right. So, um, the first one that, um, I wanted to call your attention to is CHCA. Um, that's the approval of handbooks. Um, we talked about this one because the, what they currently, what we currently have is dip, like the policy change that they had, the language change is a little bit different from what the MGL says. And so we talked about that and I asked Kirk about it. And, um, basically what MGL says is that, um, that the school committee is to approve any handbooks for nine through 12. Um, and that, um, like the other handbooks for the other, like other handbooks are can, can be available as it says here for like information, informational purposes. But it doesn't really specify in this policy that we're approving like nine to 12. I'm not really sure why they didn't do that since that's what it says in MGL. Um, but that's pretty much what our, um, practice is right now is to approve the high school one. Um, and so I didn't know, we kind of talked about it as a committee, like do we want to make it more specific to fit what we do, but also what MGL says?
Any comments or feedback for Amy on this? Questions? Go ahead, Scott.
So, um, I guess this is the second paragraph. It looks like, I guess it's three sentences. So the last sentence is talks about therefore the committee expects handbooks. That, this sentence is a mouthful. And, um, so I think there are a couple of grammatical improvements that can be made to help make it more readable. Um, for example, I think handbooks requiring approval should be hyphenated because that's a fact. It's you're saying one thing and without the hyphens, it's just awkward reading. Cause then it says, "Handbooks requiring approval be approved." It's so, that's just one request. And then the timing, so prior to publication, I think should be at the end of the sentence. Just from a readability point of view, you know, be approved by the committee prior to publication.
So you want the handbooks requiring approval? You said you wanted a hyphen there?
Yeah, it's, you're kind of, it's kind of one word in a manner of speaking. Handbooks requiring approval is like the, um, subject of the sentence.
Uh, well, if you put a hyphen there, that means that both those words are acting as an adjective for approval. I don't think that's what's going on there.
Well, handbooks requiring approval is one object, right? It's a single item. You know, if there was such a word, a single word that could mean handbooks requiring approval, that would be that word there. It's just an awkward phrasing, right?
I agree with the awkward phrasing. I'm not sure, uh, if I would change it in that way. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't know about hyphenating it, but maybe we could, I, my, can I just interrupt and ask you? Amy, is this redlined version, um, what MASC said we should use?
Yes.
This, this like wording is from MASC?
Yes. And so I'm telling you, with the original, we had, had both MGL and this in there, but I thought it was confusing. So I'm telling you what MGL says. It basically says the same thing, except for the fact that where it says, um, it says, uh, committee approval will be necessary for any handbooks. That like any handbooks is the weird part because really all that it says in MGL is nine through 12 and that is our practice. And so that's why I asked Kirk about it. And he said, yeah, you know, that's our practice and that's what MGL says. So I, I guess I don't understand why they didn't change it that way. So I'm wondering, we kept talking about it as a committee, should we change it in that way to match what we do and match what MGL says?
You're asking us?
Yes.
All right. So MGL says that we only need to approve the high school. But this is basically putting us in a position to approve all of the handbooks because every handbook has conduct, standards of conduct for employees or students.
Right. But in, it's only, all schools are only required to do it for nine through 12. Our committees are only, it's, it's nine through 12 that they.
Do you know where this language comes from that says require, um, all handbooks that include student conduct?
Uh, well, if you pull up the MGL tag at the end of this, you can like look at what MGL says. Like that link is available there. I don't know if you want to.
And does it, does it talk, does MGL say that, the conduct of employees or students?
So it says, let me pull it up here. Hold on.
I have it open too. Let's see.
It says, um, "In each school building containing grades nine to 12, includes the principal in consultation with the school council, she'll prepare and distribute to each student a student handbook setting forth the rules pertaining to the conduct of students. Um, the school council shall review the student handbook each friend considering changes and, um, the annual review shall cover all areas of student conduct." It doesn't really say, let's see. Um, Yeah, it didn't really. No.
So I would, I didn't think about this before, but you might want to look at our current BD, BGD, which is also CHB because it talks specifically about the standards of conduct. And that cross-references and says, "Standards of conduct will be included in staff and student handbooks. These handbooks will be reviewed and approved annually by local school councils and by the school committee as noted, noted by statute or regulation and in accordance with NRSD policy CHCA."
I just think it's creating a new floor. And I mean, Kirk, are you opposed to us approving all the handbooks?
Um, no, I'm not opposed to us, uh, approving the handbooks. That is a matter of the depth of work that the committee wants to get involved there. We update them manually. We have to always, uh, submit them for our coordinated program reviews and, and, and targeted reviews we do with DESI. So there's lots of methodologies that are used to review the handbooks. Um, that would be the pleasure of the committee.
Yeah, I don't see, I mean, it's, it just adds another thing to an agenda, but I think that, I mean, it ultimately, Master in the Law says that we have to review any handbook that includes student conduct or employee conduct. So I feel like it's, just because one Master in the Law says that we definitely have to do the high school handbook, there's, there's a lower floor here of approving all the handbooks. So I think it's fine the way that it is, Amy, save a little bit of grammar issue. I don't know. Anybody else want to, uh, jump in on that one?
Erin wa- wa- was waiting politely. I don't know if she left, decided she didn't need to comment.
I know.
I just had a suggestion for the wording of that awkward sentence, but I think it's irrelevant at this point because we've figured something else out.
All right, great. Um,
I'd just like to say that the prior to publication part though, I still think should go at the end. Cause the way the sentence reads now, it's like prior to publication by the school, by the committee. So it's like the committee's publishing it, you know, the way it's written. So anyhow.
Yeah, I agree with you on that one. I just, I don't think the hyphen thing, I, I don't know if I'd put the hyphen, but I definitely agree with you on that one.
Fair enough.
Said the English teacher.
My suggestion on that was to put a that in, in before, uh, before the handbooks requiring approval, just put a that. So therefore whatever, whatever, that handbooks requiring approval. I don't think we need the requiring approval anymore because we've decided that we're going to do all of them. So it would just be therefore whatever, whatever, that handbooks be
Approved.
Approved.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if ever there was a handbook that didn't include student and employee conduct, we wouldn't have to approve it. And so I think they, I, yeah, I mean, you can add the that, you can change the before, or before publication to the end. But I'll leave it to Amy. But I'll leave it to Amy to work that grammar out. She's the master after all. Anything else substantive, Amy, that you want to share with us? Any other policies?
No, there was the, um, one that we talked about some was the GBEBD, the online fundraising and solicitations. But we asked Kirk about that and Kirk, you said that's not allowed in the district. They're not allowed to use like a GoFundMe?
No, that is, that is correct.
So that one is not an issue then. And then the only other one I was going to call attention to was JBB. And not for any kind of issue, but that was one that came up in the equity report. And I know this is one that Dear J talked about, so I was just going to call attention to that. This is that policy.
Amy, the whole thing is red, I think. Is this? What changed?
Let me pull it up here.
I don't think we have one.
Yeah.
Oh, that's all? I thought we had this.
We have JB.
Yeah.
Not JBB.
Yeah.
Forgive me for not having it all committed to memory. What is JB?
JB talks about equal educational opportunities and talks specifically around mass general law regarding educational opportunities for all students and that no child shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town.
Got it. And so this one kind of goes above and beyond and speaks specifically to equity. Awesome. Anybody want to weigh in on this or have anything to say here? Alright, thank you guys for bringing that forth. That is something that Dear J was interested in seeing added. Okay.
That's it.
And that was it? Anybody have anything else on the ones that are kind of non-substantive? Go ahead, Scott.
Oh, there are two that I have thoughts about. One of them is C as in Charlie, E as in Edward.
What do you think?
So the third paragraph, um, the membership composition, et cetera. The, the second sentence talks about however the school committee wishes to be kept informed of the establishment dissolution. I, I think we need to be more directive than saying we wish to be kept informed. I think we should be saying something along the lines of the school committee should be kept informed. It just needs to be a little bit more directive in terms of, you know, to me wishes is kind of like, well, the superintendent feels like it. He can, if he does, he doesn't have to. I think it should be more clear than that.
Um, any comments? Sharon?
Yeah, I have a different policy.
Okay. Anybody have an opinion on what Scott is saying here? Amy or Sharon or Shondor, anything that you wanted to weigh in on that?
I do. If you think it's, I understand. And I also understand what Scott's saying. And I think that this is happening, so I don't, I don't know if the way that we change the word, but there are things that are happening all the time that are being communicated and funneled through the chair. So I don't know if we want to just think about what type of word would we feel comfortable with.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy. Uh, because Sharon, I think yours hand is a different item.
I'll take my hand.
Oh, that's okay. Amy Cohen, go ahead.
No, mine is for something else too.
Uh, John, on this matter?
I, I may have missed the last discussion there about wording, but uh, when I read this, I thought it, it sounded fine the way it was originally. Wasn't sure why we need to change anything. It was, uh, the expenses, I just don't know how that works was my only question in regard to that, but I thought it read fine the way it was.
Can I get a thumbs up if you guys want to put it back to shall be kept informed? Alright, looks like we might have a consensus here. Um, so maybe Amy just shift that back so that is, it defaults to, we will be informed. Anything else, Scott? You said there was one other?
There's one other. Um, J as in John, H as in Henry.
That was mine as well.
Yeah, so mine isn't so much a change here as much as an observation. You know, this talks about principals making a reasonable effort to meet with students who miss five or more unexcused school days. I don't know, my, my son's a, he graduated last year, but he missed a lot of days last year. Now, maybe they were considered excused and therefore a meeting wasn't, wasn't called for, but at no point last year was I contacted by the principal about his absences. And I know, again, I knew about them and maybe because I, you know, sent emails accordingly, they didn't contact me. But I just wonder if we are in fact following this practice based on my own experience.
We should be. If this is the policy. Yeah. Um, and I know that student absenteeism is on the front of everyone's mind right now. So perhaps these procedures are being shored up as well. Any, anybody else have a comment on this one? Sharon, I think you said you did.
Yes. So I'm, I'm finding this whole policy about absences and excused absences versus unexcused absences. I'm just finding it really confusing. The, the policy, this policy that we're reading now appears to be very much the policy that I've always thought that the district had regarding absences and a parent's ability to, you know, contact the school and say, my kid is sick today and it's an excused absence. But there was a lot of conversation earlier about attendance and what is an excused absence and what is not an excused absence and parents can't excuse absences any longer. And maybe that was excuse absences for illness any longer. And I'm, I'm just confused about what really is the policy.
Well, Kirk, can you definitively say that this syncs with what the high, what the high school and, and all the schools are doing right now?
This is something that we're working hard on right now, um, to, to build some consistency with. And we have notifications that go out to families when the, um, the students' absences get to 10. Regardless of the reason, um, it's 10 days out of school. And so when we do that, we're working with what are the, the procedures? So for instance, oftentimes we know we have the student that was out for illness and it was notified to the nurse. And so the care and concern call of, hey, a letter will be coming home, but we well recognize that, um, your student was out due to this illness. Here's the factor. If administratively speaking, we're coding and running through these absences one at a time and, and defining them as is an absence from school just a parent saying it's excused? You know, then we have no standards for going to school. Um, so we have to be very, it's, it's a very nuanced issue. And in the state law, the, the law is around seven days over a six month period. And if you're in violation of that, the family can be fined $20. So even the state law on, on school absences is outdated and needs revision as well. So, I might suggest that we, we table moving this policy forward so that we can dig deeper into it to address some of those questions that Ms. Pock, for instance, brought up.
Yeah, I agree. Amy, why don't you note that, that this one's going to come out? Because this is, this is so operational that we perhaps need Kirk or Kate. Cause at the high school is really when this rubber hits the road. So where kids start actually being academically punished or I mean, it's K to 12, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's an issue K to 12 for a whole host of variety of reasons. And we want to be mindful of all the various scenarios that families are facing regarding uh, school refusal and school attendance, um, which is why I've instructed the, the principals of we're going to notify and have conversations with family when it's just absence. Whether it's a sickness, whether it's a religious holiday, whether it's a vacation, once you get to 10, it's just a standard notification. And that's just, and that notification is, hey, here's, we, we see that you've been, uh, that your child's missed 10 days of school. This is providing a notice to be mindful about that in terms of, uh, school attendance. But as always, if your child's sick, we don't want a child going to school sick. So it's, it's the soft entry into those conversations that for a handful can get very complex.
Right. Oh, Jackie, go right ahead.
And I'm wondering, because we're going to table this, I know that Dear J is working on an equitable decision-making tool that, once it's approved by the school committee for use, that it really will, I think, talk through these types of policies and how, what are the implications? Both on the policy side, but also on the operational side. So that might be something worth waiting for to use.
Thanks, Jackie. Uh, Amy.
Um, I have another policy.
Oh, a different policy? Okay. Anything else on this policy? Sharon? Nope, you're going to wait?
Yes, I, I do. Um, sorry. I was trying to unmute myself, but I was already unmuted. There's another component of this, maybe just to think about it a little bit further, and that's the piece about, if a student misses 10 consecutive days that they are unenrolled. I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with that. And I know that it was a little bit more nuanced than simply that straightforward. There was a meeting and some other things required. But I, I feel like that does not take into, that blanket statement does not take into consideration, again, different factors that might be influencing an individual situation. Where they may be missing an extended period of school. And it feels punitive. I'm uncomfortable with that.
Got it. Alright, so Amy tabled this one and we'll, we'll, um, perhaps have to meet more in depth with Kirk and his team. Uh, Amy Cohen, you had something different?
Yeah, thank you. Um, policy JFBB dash one, I don't know. The dash is necessary, but it's on school choice. Wondered, um, if this was an opportunity to, in reading this policy, it seems that there's nothing in here about, in item three, the random drawing being held, being witnessed or recorded or held in public. Made of, able to be viewed by the public. Yeah. Is that something that we would want to try to incorporate in a policy on school choice? I know that we've kind of observed that we need to, we might need to shore up that process so that there's less questions about how people are selected for the, for school choice. Um, and this seems like a way to do it.
Kirk, do you have an opinion on this? Oh, you're muted, Kirk.
Thank you for that. The policies outline, the, the policy's meant to mirror the statute. And so, uh, the question before the committee would be, do you want to do anything that goes beyond what the statute requires regarding school policy, this policy?
I, I would be in favor of that. I don't know how the field committee feels. I don't know if this is another one we need to table and just kind of do some review of what other districts are, what their practice is. But I would feel more comfortable with, with that.
I actually think that, um, not only might it make residents feel more comfortable, but I actually think it would cover our people to actually have, um, an opportunity for people to attend or view so that there can be no misrepresenting what's happening.
It's a, it's, uh, we publish it to families to come and attend when they apply. And so we send out the invitations and we do it in the school committee room and last two years in a row, no one has arrived.
So maybe that's something that we could do also, we can announce at a school committee meeting. I mean, not that everybody watches us, but, um, it can be in the meeting materials. It could be announced. And it's only for people who are in the lottery to attend, I imagine, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So maybe we could just maybe make it, um, more public and not just emailed, because I know I miss emails all the time, but so, um, Amy, could your subcommittee maybe consider this? Also, it's like an equity issue as well. So maybe Jackie, you can kind of put an ear to this as well at your next meeting to think about making this more, not more transparent, but just more publicly announced.
Okay.
Anything else, guys, in the list? Alright, as always, we appreciate the policy subcommittee and this hard work. So thanks, guys, for all of that. X out all my policies, hang on. Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda, we are just a tad um, early, but that's okay. I think that Ross is ready for our finance and operations update. Ross, I will let you introduce our director of facilities for the capital plan.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, so we have three items for finance and operations this evening. The first item is our annual presentation of the district's capital plan that is submitted to the town administrators prior to the change of the calendar year per the regional agreement. I'm joined this evening by our facilities director, Rob Frieswick, and technology manager, Sue Chi. Um, Alita, would you mind pulling the presentation up or do you want me to drive it tonight? I didn't hear you.
It doesn't matter to me. I can do it.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead? Thank you.
Sure.
So as Alita's pulling that up, uh, last week at the budget warrant subcommittee meeting, we reviewed the capital plan in detail. We went well over the allotted time on the agenda, but I think that was time well spent and prepared us for our overview this evening. And we provide, promised to provide a brief overview of not just the plan, but also the process. So as and if you could just go forward a couple of slides to, yeah, you can go past that. Yep. So I also, can you go to the, the introductions real quickly? I just want to make sure we also acknowledge, third slide, please. Thanks. Uh, Pam Sylvester, who is our facilities program coordinator, who does a great deal of the legwork on billing and invoicing and all those types of things, but also coordinating, um, Kylie Harris, who works in our department, obviously coordinating with towns on payments. And then obviously our partners and, uh, colleagues in the towns, including the town administrators. Next slide, please, Alita. So here are the essentials of the capital process. I know we have so, some new members who may not have seen, uh, the presentation before. But essentially we have an ongoing need, uh, or ongoing assessment of our capital needs, um, that happens throughout the year. But by the end of the calendar year, we do need to submit our five-year capital plans to our member towns. So we present this information to the school committee, not for vote or approval, but simply for, uh, the education of what's in these capital plans. So you're well aware. Once it goes to the towns and each town has its own process for taking that information in, whether it's through ClearGov in Stowe or Form in, uh, Bolton that's new this year with the new town administrator. From that point, it is really up to the towns on how they handle these. Obviously, we, uh, Mr. Friesick and I meet with each town administrator to go through these pieces. Sometimes the DPWs are involved, um, but quite often it's really just that meeting with the town administrator to, to go through the plan in detail. That point on through January until about April, they're making their decisions on their capital, um, requests. Stowe is unique that it has a capital planning committee that we present our information to. Uh, and they also, uh, either approve or sort of, or support or do not support uh, our capital requests on the town meeting floor. So in May, when those Uh, our capital requests on the town meeting floor. So in May, when those town meetings occur. Sometimes these things are voted, um, and approved, sometimes they are not, sometimes they don't make their way to the town warrants. Um, but i- i- if they are approved, then after that town meeting, we, we start to work on. How are we gonna implement this capital project? When is it gonna be scheduled? Who's doing the work? If it's going out to bid, how's it going out to bid, all those pieces, and being in really tight communication with the towns around this. If it does not get approved or does not move forward to the town meeting, then it just goes back into the next step of the capital cycle. Um, that I am going to show you next. Um, Alita, if you move on to the next slide. So for the di- the committee's, um, information, these are the four, uh, things that we submitted to the town of Bolton for capital. Last year for FY twenty-five. Um, you can see that one was, uh, approved and is currently under contract and moving forward. The other three have been resubmitted for FY twenty-six. Uh, in Lancaster, uh, on the next slide. We had a total of three projects. All three were approved by the town administration. Um, and through their channels and their processes, and we have two complete, and we are just waiting on one more for attending start date. Within the town of Stowe, we requested four things. Three, uh, were supported and approved. Um, it's through their process. One, the existing conditions res- um, assessment was not. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about that more, um, as Lancaster did move that forward and it's been completed. Uh, if we go to the next slide, so Mr. Frieswick, um, does build the capital plan. Um, and works with, uh, you know, the host of people that we have working in the district on maintenance projects. And, uh, installations, all those types of things, repairs. Uh, and his own, uh, information to identify issues and deficiencies that are coming up and looking at how those fit into the capital plan. And then works with known vendors and contractors to build and price those estimates. That's the process in Bolton and Stowe. It was the process in Lancaster, but because of the building assessment that was approved by the town last year. An engineering firm came in and did a pretty extensive building assessment, and we have a very extensive report. Uh, Mr. Friesick can talk a little bit more about that, but again, it provided a great more detail. Um, not only by experts by segment, but also as far as prioritizing costs, what would the escalation be over time? Those types of things that really do help us build a much more informative capital plan. Uh, so now at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Frieswick and, um, also to Su Chi. Su Chi is going to present the information on the, uh, camera servers and switch replacements. On Bolton's slide, he's not gonna repeat the same information on the Lancaster and Stowe slide. It's the same information, the same need across the district. So, uh, Mr. Friesick will present the first couple of pieces of information. And again, when Su Chi, uh, provides his piece, he's only gonna do it for Bolton, so we're not being repetitive this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. McCarran. Uh, good evening, everybody. I appreciate the time to talk about the capital request for FY twenty-six. Um, as Mr. McCarran said, um, we're gonna be, uh, resubmitting the building condition, conditions assessments in Bolton. Um, that assessment will encompass the Sawyer Building, the Emerson Building, and also, um, Central Office. Like Mr. McCarran said, you know, with the project that we undertook down in Lancaster, um, it's going to give us a must, much more robust. Um, look at our buildings, um, you know, from roofing, architecture, plumbing, heating. Um, electrical, all things that are inside of the building. One of the other FY twenty-six requests is the propane tanks over at the Sawyer Building. There's five one thousand gallon tanks that are below grade. Um, those propane tanks are owned by Suburban Propane. Uh, which limits us to go out for competitive bid for our, um, propane each year. Um, you'll see two numbers on there. Um, I've been working with a propane company right now, um, and they've had some success in working with. Sub- uh, suburban propane and buying out the existing tanks. Um, which will eliminate the need to dig up the existing tanks and have them replaced with the associated piping and tanks. The second number you see on there is the full excavation, pulling the old tanks out and in- uh, installing new tanks. At the Emerson Building, the flooring in the classroom and the hallways, uh, is at the end of its life expectancy. Um, a lot of the carpeting in the classrooms, uh, is heavily stained. Uh, as you can imagine, you've got a lot of little kids over the past, you know, twenty years. Um, you know, it, it makes quite a mess, um, started to tear in some areas. Um, and just the wear and tear on the VCT, VCT tile that's inside of the classroom, uh, inside the hallways. Emerson exterior door replacement, uh, the doors are at the end of their life. Uh, we've had to make a lot of repairs to make sure that the doors are closing properly and locking. Um, you know, that's obviously crucial for building security. Um, Chi, I could turn it over to you real quick, so you can update on the server cameras, uh, replacement and the next, uh, network switches.
Okay, so here, uh, hello, I want, um. So for the, for the, uh, tech stuff, we put in two requests. One is for the switch, um. So switch, network switch i- is a device connect other, uh, equipment on the network. Like, uh, computers, servers, storage, copiers, printers, you know, cameras. So because of their, uh, uh, their function is like to link everything together, so all device talk to, talk to each other. And also, you know, this is how like, uh, all the devices connect to internet. Um, we have multiple switch in each building and, um. So age of all these switches, um, it is almost all like ten years plus, oh, no. Like a typical industry, uh, standard is like, uh, we should like replace this device, uh. Like seven years, you know, on that cycle. Um, we make it work for all these years, but really, uh, we reached to a point, uh, we should think about replacing them. So the. So camera, uh, the server for the cameras, um, as device, uh, store all the video cameras for the, uh. Security reasons and also how to process all those videos. And, uh, those servers, uh, we have one server for each building and, uh. So server lifespan normally is like around five years. All the server we currently have is about like seven plus years old, so they're also reached to that point. And also couple server particulars of, so why in high school, uh, there are some failed components, so we kind of no longer have redundancy in place. So if something happened, uh, we're gonna lose all that function altogether. So that is kind of a critical piece, uh, we should re- replace. So that's kind of the two thing we put forward, you know, to the committee for consider.
Alita, I think we can move on to the next slide.
Quick question about the tech stuff, if, uh, it's okay to ask now.
Uh. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that, and then we can move on to the rest? That's fine.
Uh, it, uh, I, I brought it up in the budget and warrant, but I, I don't think we had an answer there. Um, for the, the tech items, uh, I see that they're repeated across, uh, the different buildings. I assume that there is some economic benefit to buying for all the buildings at once and getting better pricing. Is that something that we're able to do? Is that something that's included in these estimates?
That actually is one of the reasons. Of course, we will buy, uh, multiple, like, uh, the price comes down. Uh, another, another reason we like to propose, and hopefully we can get approval in all town, all three town together, is because of high school new building. And so in the new building, of course, everything we, there will be new, and, uh, the switch we're putting there. Is this like, uh, uh, a new brand? It's much advanced, like a lot of AI-driven, you know, building? So we want, we want all the switch, uh, in all buildings compatible with the high school. So that's another reason we should move forward, you know, and we hope like, you know, we all three town can approve altogether.
I, I'll enter this answer as well, Mr. Simon. This is the complexity of. Being in a regional school system, as this is a capital item, and according to the regional agreement, these are the items that we need to bring forward to the taxpayers of each individual town. For the buildings that, um, in each of those towns. So, yes, there is power in purchasing when we can do them all together. Um, it takes quite a bit of, of coordination between our towns to make that happen.
I hear.
Okay, why don't we, um, move on to the Lancaster capital needs?
So for FY twenty-six, um, these capital requests, um, are a direct result from the existing conditions assessment. Um, that was performed this summer. Um, the exterior masonry, uh, chimney for the boiler, um, down in Lancaster. Um, there's signs of failing mortar joints at the top of the chimney, um, and. You know, as those mortar joints deteriorate, water gets inside, um, you know, underneath the brick and can cause premature failure of that chimney. Um, and that was one of the findings that, you know, we, we need to get up there, um, you know, redo those mortar joints and make sure that that chimney is watertight. Um, same thing for the windows and doors, the sealant around the windows and doors. Uh, over time, you know, from UV degradation, um, you know, there, it's starting to fall apart. Um, and that's gonna introduce water behind, you know, behind the door frames, window frames. Um, so we need to replace that to make sure that we're protected from water vapor and air intrusion. Same thing with the brick, uh, control joints, veneer control joints, um, over time, same thing with the UV degradation that breaks down. So those control joints, the caulking needs to get, um, removed and put new caulking in there, so we don't have. Um, water getting in behind that brick and causing the brick to fall apart. Colony column bases, um, this is in the front of the building, um, at the entryway. Um, same thing where the, we have the columns to meet the, um, concrete walkway. All that caulking is starting to deteriorate, so that needs to be removed and replaced. Through the existing conditions assessments, um, you know, we looked at a lot of different issues, known issues in the building. Um, and for years and since I started and even before, um, there's been some moisture issues inside that building. Um, and there's been some mitigation work that's tried to take care of that. There was. A French drain that was put in on one side of the building to try to see if they could get the moisture, uh, away from the slab of the building. Um, but one of the recommendations from Leroy Corp was to, um. Do a performance diagnostic on the sixty-two unit events, classroom unit events that are inside the building. Um, so we'd have a firm come in, do diagnostic testing on those unit vents. And then from there, um, you can see an HVAC step two. Um, doing the servicing and maintenance to repair any deficiencies that are found in those unit ventilators.
On the next slide, I just wanna make one note of a correction, and again, we won't repeat the information on the network switch replacement and the server replacement. Uh, but the network switch replacement for Lancaster should be a hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars, not the one seventy-three, two hundred. So Alita, I'll get you the corrected slide to post for the meeting materials.
FY twenty-six, um, request for Stowe, um, we're putting forward the existing conditions assessments for hail. Um, that was brought to the floor last year at annual town meeting. It was not supported, so we're bringing that back again this year. Um, the water storage tank inside the L building, um, that stores the drinking water, um, you know, for the building. Um, it's starting to show some signs of rust, um, so. Through our DEP, our five-year annual, uh, five-year DEP inspections, that was one of the recommendations. Is that we pressure wash, prep and repaint the exterior of that storage tank, so it lasts for much longer. Um, fire alarm control panel, it's, it's at its end of its life. Um, you know, as things break in there, it's becoming more difficult to find replacement parts, so we're gonna be upgrading the fire alarm control panel there. Um, the carpeting in the auditorium, uh, is at the end of its life. There's a lot of rips in it. Um, it was actually noted in our preoccupancy walkthrough with the fire department this summer, um, you know, that we need to take action on that. To make sure nobody trips and falls. Center school, um, the original part of the building, um, that's along one seventeen, the, uh, gable ends, um, and around the window. Um, the front windows, um, the paint needs to be, um, scraped and repainted. And security cameras and the network switches.
Uh, just on the last of the buildings, it's just the high school, and that's just simply for the camera server replacement, and that actually should not say center and hail. It's just for the high school. Obviously, we're not looking to replace the network switch there, because that would be part of the building project, as explained by Su Chi. Uh, Alita, if you go to the next slide, so our next steps are, we'll be submitting the five-year capital plans to our member town administrators. Uh, through the process that they prefer in each of the towns, uh, we will, uh, likely as part of their requests. Submit backup in the form of quotes, pictures, um, specs, things like that. Um, uh, you know, sometimes it's a report from preventative maintenance about something that's going on. But we try to provide the backup for them and have the, um, explanation so that they can move forward with their decision-making. And again, through January into April, they obviously do their processes, and if something moves forward to the annual town meeting. It gets presented as, uh, you know, uh, an article and hopefully passes, and then if it does. We go ahead and start working on how we're gonna implement that capital project. And if not, we put it back into the, uh, process for the next capital plan. And, uh, as part of the meeting materials this evening, um, on additional resources. You can find the actual full capital plan. You can see the difference, uh, in the Lancaster schools. We did a, um, a screenshot of how those things are broken out with priority. As well as, there's a link to the regional agreement. I know that's on the, um, school committee page, but for the public, you know, the information about how that capital budget. Um. Is, uh, assessed for the high school, but also the process, uh, as well. So, thank you, Alita. Are there any questions regarding the capital plan for myself, uh, Rob Frieswick or Su Chi?
Ross, can you very quickly just re-explain what you said about the high school?
With regards to the.
You said there was one, yeah, so.
Yeah, it just, it should, uh, uh, on the, it says camera servers, but in parentheses, it's center and hail. That was from the previous slide, uh, just when I was setting up the tables. So that is the correct cost for just the high school, for just their security camera server. Obviously, we would not be upgrading the network switch, because that's gonna be part of the building project as that moves forward.
Thank you. Any other questions around the capital plan? Ross, I'm not sure if you said this at the very beginning, and I'm sorry if I missed it. Um, as the committee might notice that the existing conditions. Assessment is only on the capital plan for Stowe and Bolton. That's because Lancaster paid for it out of pocket.
Uh, so specific funding source, like, I don't wanna quote the town of Lancaster, but they did fund the building assessment report. Um, we'll be providing that not just to Lancaster, but to all, uh, uh, the other two towns as well. Part of Stowe's capital planning was that they, they felt hesitant, and I, and I, and I understand their, their justification, that they wanted to see an example. Um, so this provides a real world in district example of how we've used the building assessment, and we can continue to use it. Um, so for example, in Lancaster, with regards to unit events, uh, you know, the proposal of having those further diagnostic. Uh, studies done and looked at in, in more depth, and also potential maintenance to those or upgrades to those. Is in the plan as well as what the cost would be to do, um, the full unit events with. In sections of like sixteen, I think it was, but we have over sixty, so it's really a million dollar project, if not more, to replace all those unit events. But the, the building assessment provides an avenue and alternate pathways to address issues or dig deeper into issues to prevent. The higher cost, um, coming up sooner. So those are the types of things that we're seeing as beneficial. Not all high priority items that, we're not putting all those forward for the next year's capital plan. But we're, we're working to segment those out, um, and, and, and be judicious in our recommendations, but obviously. You know, the, the town owns the, the, the capital, or excuse me, the building assessment just as much as we do. And they can use it, uh, to make and adjust, um, you know, or, or find more information.
Excellent, thank you. Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, my question has to do with, um, you know, the school committee's role in all of this, you know, like. For example, in the town of Bolton, it looks like. Um, last year, we also, the, the administration put forth the request for the building floor replacement. And it was not funded, and so it's showing up again this year. Um, but this is really up, there's two steps for this to get funded. One is that the select board members have to agree to put it on the warrant, and then the next one is that the, it has to be voted to be funded at the town meeting, but. As a school committee member, we don't really impact what's happening. What, throughout that process, true?
Yeah, Amy, I, I think you bring up, Ms. Cohen, pardon me, uh, I think you bring up, um. A very good point, a couple of things. We could look to this committee, um, and we don't have to do that tonight. We can, we can certainly look at our, our future agenda. Uh, to take a vote of support for these items as a. Uh, as, as a marker that the school committee is pushing these things, but also, uh, the participation and attendance at town meetings. And vocalizing support and the importance of these items and advancing them forward, I think is another critical piece, and it is always helpful. But you are right, that we don't have the fiscal leverage to pull, to advance these items forward, so we have to use our. So we have to use our political levers, uh, to create the compelling cases of why we need these items.
But if in the case of, um, things that continue to get not funded, um, at some point, the, will those end up being assessed to the towns?
Yeah, so, so if it, if it came down that we had to use, um, assessment levers for that, um, we would look to the processes outlined in Massachusetts general law. Gosh, it's been a little while since the building project days. I'm, I remember in chapter seventy-one, section D and N. I would have to go back and look up, but yes, I mean, ultimately, if we got into disrepair and the building could not function without it, the, we, we would have to take those costs and use assessment levers for that.
I will interject and say that this, this is for the whole committee, really, especially new members, but very much for the communities to understand that that we are quasi-autonomous body, but we don't own all of these properties. And so the regional agreement tries to build a bridge on this because we can't compel the towns to keep the buildings in good standing. And it was, um, a real debate on the regional advisory committee that just rewrote the regional agreement. And, um, you know, I went kind of toe to toe with a well-respected member of a select board on this matter. And I wanted the lever in the regional agreement that we could force the issue on this. And so, um, I lost that debate, um, and the towns are completely in control of managing the physical structures that our kids go to every single day. So our partnerships are actually, our informal partnerships are really important to keep that communication line open. And I know that, um, Ross's team really does that and Rob too, does a great job um, helping the towns understand what is absolutely necessary. That, you know, this is not a list of wants. This is a list of needs. And I think that making sure that the town leadership and all of the community members understand that when they're, when they don't vote for these things at town meeting, that they're just kicking the can down the road on, on a handful of them that are actually very important to student safety. So that, there's a rub there, and I want to make it really clear that we're aware of that rub. And, um, the community needs to understand that if they make decisions not to fund these things, that it, it could have real impact on teaching and learning. So thanks, Rob, for that. One more time, we appreciate you, um, making this happen as is required by the regional agreement. And, uh, thank you, Succi, for your help as well in identifying those items. We really appreciate it. So good luck as you go forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I hope everybody has a good holiday season.
All right, Ross, uh, keep it rolling with rates review.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so we annually present proposed rate increases for several of our sectors that bring in fees or tuition that ultimately are used to offset costs within the district. Uh, the first rate proposal, uh, for this evening is our extended learning. I'll wait for Alita to pull up the slide deck. So I don't get ahead of myself. So our extended learning program, uh, is, you know, providing after-school and before-school care for K to five students that, um, register for the program. And obviously those are at their own schools. Uh, so we run three sites at Mary Rollinson, Florence Sawyer School and the Center School. Uh, last year, you may recall, uh, that we did an extensive comparables review in order to set the level for this type of service. Not just in, uh, local, but, uh, excuse me, neighboring districts, but also local districts and found places, um, where they ran similar programs. So that's why you saw the, the larger increase from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five. For FY twenty-six, um, presenting a simple four and a half percent increase. Uh, this does two things. It keeps, uh, pace with our Unit C extended learning staff's increase. And also provides, uh, the ability for the district, uh, to also keep pace with its planned and historical offsets from extended learning. Um, Alita, if you go ahead and just move on to the after-school, I just want to make sure the committee is aware that they're all four and a half percent. Um, so again, this allows us to make sure that we're meeting our payroll needs. Then we're also, um, keeping up with our historical offsets that come from the extended learning, um, revolving account. Um, and again, we did the comparables last year, so we don't feel that it's necessary to continue that process this year. Although in a couple of years, we're going to want to go back to that same process. Um, Alita, if you just go ahead to the preschool rates, uh, the first thing you'll notice is obviously that we've moved to just the five-half day and the five-full day. We no longer offer the three full half-day option. In speaking with our early childhood administrator, Kristen Ryan, she felt that we were going to continue not to offer the three-half day next year. So that's why that's not here. Uh, the six and a half percent increase is a little bit more than it has been in the last two fiscal year increases, and here's why. If we take not just, uh, let me provide a little bit more detail. If we take the, uh, usage of tuition, uh, which is to offset salaries of our preschool staff um, that are in these programs, uh, where kids are paying tuition rate for some of these slots. They have a contract that not just has their increase of a percentage, but also folks move up steps and over lanes based on education, um, credit changes. So the net result of all those changes from year to year for the preschool salaries is six and a half percent. So that's why this keeps, uh, this goes to six and a half percent. If we were not going to keep up with the, the pace of those salary, uh, changes, we would put more onus on the operating budget and less onus on the, uh, revolving fund, uh, and tuition, uh, to support those salaries. So it doesn't necessarily increase or decrease the percentage share, but it just simply keeps pace. Uh, with regards to the facilities rentals. So before I, I do any sort of, uh, review of what's being proposed, um, we did do a look at, uh, the historical revenue that has come in, um, from the facilities, uh, use over time. You can obviously the major dip, uh, in FY twenty-one, when basically the, the buildings were essentially closed due to COVID for any rentals. FY twenty-two, we actually still saw a limited use of the building. Um, but many of you will remember that the, uh, TV show Dexter filmed at Neshova Regional High School for several days, overtook the campus at the end of the summer. And seventy-eight thousand of that hundred and seven thousand was due to, uh, those filming contracts. We've seen an increase from twenty-three to twenty-four and what we brought in. Year to date for twenty-five, we are a little bit under pace with the last couple of years, um, as, as of the end of November, beginning of December. However, some of that is due to the fact that we had, uh, limited use of the high school campus this summer, which we typically see a lot of, uh, programs come in and use the facility. So, uh, that's just a historical piece. On the last slide, Alita, I am just presenting a simple five percent increase to keep up with, um, you know, inflation, some of our, our facilities contracts, uh, those types of things. And again, um, no other changes by, besides the fact that we're just, um, changing the rates by five percent. So at this point, I can take any questions on the proposed rates.
Anybody have any questions? I have a quick question for you, Ross. I feel like the last time we looked at the, I don't know if it was the end of year report, but I think last meeting, when you presented, it seemed to me that the after-school program was running in the black by quite a bit. So why is it necessary to increase the rates if it's paying for itself and then some?
So what I would say is that, uh, uh, when we do the budget, um, we talk about offsets. I'm going to present what historically was used, um, for those offsets. The offsets have actually decreased in the last few years, the amount of what they were, as compared to what they had been in the past. So I'll present that information about, I think we need to get back to the level of offset that was coming out of the extended learning program i- in order to, um, get back to the, that, that level.
Because you're worried that those, those costs are going to reappear?
Uh, well, i- i- historically, the district has used more of the extended learning fund to offset the budget. That has gone down a little bit. Most likely, my understanding was because we brought in, you know, last during that, that year that we had nobody in our extended learning program for COVID. So we sort of backed off on some of those offsets, but now we can get back to that and start to use that surplus, but also keep up with the pace of what's necessary.
Okay.
I fully understand the, um, the question that you're proposing. Uh, I think presenting to you in the committee, uh, what those offsets have been will pro- provide a little bit more context on that.
And we vote on this, um, at, like, on the same day as the budget workshop. So before we vote on these rates, we would be hearing more about those offsets. Right?
Correct.
Okay, Amy.
Yeah, I, I think this follow, follows up to what Leah is saying for the, um, preschool monthly tuition. Proposed rates, I would feel a bit more comfortable approving a six-point-five percent increase for fiscal year twenty-six if I knew, um, that we weren't pricing ourselves out of the competition. Like, I, I just don't know where, how that compares to other choices that parents have at eleven hundred dollars a month. So I don't know if you're able to put that in context for us. I don't know if that information is easy to get. I tried to do some Googling and couldn't find it out myself.
Yeah, no, when we did, uh, uh, we did that, uh, last year or the year before, Ms. Cohen, it does become a little bit complex because we are not a eight-hour to ten-hour program that some tools slash daycares provide. Some of our other neighboring districts also may have a, uh, a larger, um, grant type level of funding through IDEA or maybe a universal preca- there's a lot of sorts of wrinkles within these types of programs that make them all a little bit unique and comparable, but it does not mean that we can't look at, uh, those types of things.
Yeah, Ms. Cohen, I know that Mr. Manch is in the meeting this evening and, and is listening in on the conversation. And we'll direct her to work, um, with Ms. Ryan, our director of the early childhood program, uh, to see what we can do in terms of understanding some comp you're looking for.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Lots to take in there. All right, not seeing any, uh, then we will perhaps move on. So more to come on that, guys. We'll vote on it, um, at, in January. Now we can talk a little bit about the, um, uh, FY twenty-five November operating budget report.
Yep, thank you. So the last item for finance and operations this evening is the operating report as of the end of November. Um, the report was presented and discussed with budget and warrant subcommittee last week. Uh, the first note I want to share with you is that we'll continue to need to offset the special education budget with additional use of circuit breaker. Uh, we expect that additional offset to be close to the additional offset that was applied last year. I want to stress that this is in addition to the planned offset. And we'll discuss special education budget and offsets a little bit more in depth next month as we present the budget. Uh, I also at the suggestion of budget and warrant, I've added a standing note regarding the surpluses we see in our buildings. Uh, and those cost centers, uh, they're at this point of the year due to salary, uh, attrition. So while I say that publicly each month, uh, while I present this report, we, um, want to make sure the public has that information as well. So that footnote is now added. Uh, just lastly, uh, facilities and, uh, substitute teachers. Um, I think I've said a couple of times either here or definitely at budget and warrant with substitute teachers. We're doing a little bit of a better analysis of our usage over time, uh, taking out that COVID year, um, and some of those impacts. Um, I think in building a, a little bit more of a, um, more accurate budget. Um, as you can see, our prediction is that we will use, um, more than is, uh, in that cost center. Uh, however, with facilities, because we had a little bit of a warmer start to the winter, uh, we're trending, uh, in the positive right now. But again, that can change at any point during the winter based on conditions, um, snowstorms, uh, cold snaps, all those types of things. Uh, but otherwise, we're looking, uh, good in that department. So I can take any questions on the operating report.
I'm not seeing any golden hands. Any other questions? All right, everybody. Thank you very much for that, Ross. That was all very informative. We appreciate your time and energy.
Yep, and I have my notes for budget to make sure that we're, we're answering those questions, providing that information.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. So on the agenda next is, um, we have no unfinished business. So I would like to make time for any subcommittee or advisory reports if there's anything you would like to make the committee aware of. All right, so I'm not seeing any pressing news to, um, provide. Oh, Kirk has something.
I just, I'm, I'm just cross-checking takeaways, Madam Chair. I'm going to look back at, uh, some clarification on the handbook policy, although we think we're going to move forward with that to see how that's supported. Attendance policy, getting some clarity and some language on that. Um, the school choice policy regarding, uh, public uh, participation, if you will, h- how that's written into there. And then we're going to look at some preschool rates. Is there anything I'm missing for takeaways? And Ms. Vessel knows the other work that I've, I've asked to move forward in regards to the competency determination.
Yes, um, will, will you be coming to our January, um, sixth meeting?
Yeah, Ms. Masterson will make sure that's on my calendar.
Okay.
Um, I, I hope Amy to have
You read my mind.
Yeah, I, I, I hope to have some more guidance on the competency determination. Um, I know it's being reviewed, uh, at MASSS and the tri-county superintendents. I received an email this afternoon that we're making a priority on our agenda that I believe is the ninth. We don't, I don't want us to feel like we have to have competency determination solved by like the end of January. We don't. Um, but I'll, I'll reach out to you directly, Ms. Vessels, on, because I think it's best for us to discuss once I've been able to hit those roundtables to get as much depth as I possibly can through the wisdom of the superintendents and, and Dussie.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
What a storm that's created. All right, thanks for that, Kirk. Appreciate it. Um, Amy Cohen.
And I, 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 I have to acknowledge Assistant Superintendent Friend, as this is an issue she's, um, digging deep into and participated in the webinar this afternoon on behalf of the district. So, uh, we're going to be working closely together with Dr. Boyton, um, uh, for, uh, guidance and language on that, so.
Great, uh, Amy.
I apologize when you said Amy before. I thought you were talking to me. It's very confusing. Um, I just wanted to ask if you could remind me when the, um, communication subcommittee should, I need the date in January.
Yeah, my, my meeting with Dr. Boyton is tomorrow.
Okay.
So I have my regular meeting with Dr. Boyton, and then we're meeting with our advisory students. Uh, so I will have that information for you. Uh, go on.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we've already talked to, um, uh, Assistant Principal Walker, uh, who is leading that, the student council. So he's aware of that. So we're aligning with him.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is he the, is he, he's the new advisor?
Yeah. That's right. So, and, and forgive Ms. Cohen, I don't have the January dates on me, but he already said, yeah, let's look at January and then we, uh, bi-weekly. So i- it's just a matter of, I will get those to you.
I, I will follow up with the email.
Oh, excellent. Will you make sure to copy Ms. Masterson on that as well? Thank you.
Any other subcommittee matters? All right, guys. So the, the agenda for, uh, the next meeting is obviously set uh, with the budget workshop. Let's see here. Thanks, Alita, for pulling that up. Um, there's a couple of other things that we'll take votes on, um. Amy, um, if that policy second reading is ready, then we will keep that on there. If not, you can just let us know. But I imagine the more mundane items can go into the consent agenda.
Okay, and then, uh, we'll wait then I guess till the end of the month. We have a, several more policies that we need to bring forward.
Yep, the deluge continues on you. Thank you for managing that. All right, guys. So anything else for the good of the order here? Anything you want in the parking lot or on, on an agenda somewhere? Okay. Uh, as always, if you think of something afterward, just shoot me an email and I can manage that for us. But other than that, um, that is going to do it for this evening. I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think that was Sharon. Well done.
Was.
Uh, so we'll take the roll call vote. I'm going to start with Robin.
Yes.
Myself. Yes, Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Sharon. Sharon.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean Dore.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Hi, Lindsay.
Hi, sorry, I was at a work event and I say yes.
Totally fine. Thanks for coming. Um and Scott?
Yes.
And Jackie. Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. I hope you all have a great holiday. We'll see you after the new year.